All right. Good morning, everyone. Today's date is June 25th, 2021. It's 9:30 a.m. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start this meeting out in our bill paying session, so. Do you have the bills, Harold?
I got them.
All right. So just bear with us for a few minutes as we sign the bills and then we'll load them in.
Must've got some movement. Snippers. Everybody just out.
So yeah, the puff clouds kind of wonderful. We're missing two. Well, I saw one, three, and four. But hey, you don't need one.
If you're not here, you get left out.
I think it's kind of like it's been over the park. He's talking.
I wonder what happened to the printer. Well, I didn't know. I saw mine, and I saw three and four.
You don't have to show me.
That's a character.
No.
You get yours up front.
Is Scotty signing all the letters? It just started. He went number zero. Yeah. Kevin, Ellen.
The total for June 25th is going to be $1,184,869. Eight hundred and sixty-nine.
Okay.
All right. So you've heard the over of your motion to approve that. I'll make a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Nell. Do I hear second? I'll say. Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You have anything, London? For this section? No. Then we'll stand, in our open session, we'll stand closed at 9:40. So we'll now open our general meeting. We're having, instead of workshop this morning, we're having our Commissioner's Court meeting. Due to schedule conflicts on Monday, we wouldn't have it for more. So we're having our regular meeting this morning. So first item is to pledge and interlocute occasionally by the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Good Lord, thank you for another glorious day. Lord, just thank you for the mercy, grace, and greater goodness that you give us each and every day. Lord, be with people that have recently lost loved ones due to tragic events. Lord, just be with the military and governments. Lord, just be with them. And Lord, be with us today as we go with these items on the agenda. Have best to give glory to all the citizens. We pray the most precious day.
Amen.
All right. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 14th, 2021. Special meetings of June 11th, 2021, and June 18th of 2021. Y'all have all had a copy of those minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve them as written?
I'll send them over to George.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Madam Maldonado.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. The first item I have is to accept and approve the independent auditor's annual report for the year ended December 31st, 2020, as presented by I. Bailey. And we are still wrapping up our year-end audit. So at this time, there's going to be, I'm going to table that and no action. Today, we will present that report on July 2nd at our next meeting. So we're working on getting that wrapped up. The next item I have is to award the bid for food products and food service items from the Hill County Sheriff's Office. And I presented you all with a bid recap sheet. This year, we did have, it was approved by the court that we have a discretionary exemption. So we still do a bid process. It's just a little bit different where we get proposals, so to speak. So we did mail that out, or we emailed it out, to Affiliated Foods, Bimbo Bakeries, Cisco, and U.S. Foods. And the two that we received back were Mrs. Baird's and Affiliated Foods. And so as you can see on the recap sheet, and these are based on the products that they bid. So for Bimbo Bakeries, they only bid the bread items, $33.30. And then Affiliated Foods bid every item that was on the bid. So every single item that they bid came out to be $8,041.57. And so the sheriff isn't here, but I know he had relayed to me that this is who he currently uses, Mrs. Baird's for the bid for the bread items. And then Affiliated Foods does everything else. And that's what we would be asking the court to approve today. And this bid does go into effect on July 15th of 2021, and it'll go through July 14th of 2022.
All right. So you've heard the requests to award the food bids for the Hill County Sheriff's Office, the bread, the Mrs. Baird, and the remaining food items to affiliated foods.
And allow the county judge to sign those contracts.
Allow the county judge to sign the contract. Get someone to make that in the form of a motion. I'll make the motion. All right. Motion made by Commissioner Nell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. How does items, do you know?
I'm supposed to present third.
Okay.
Seat.
All right. Go ahead, dear.
What? Okay. We're looking at a motion to hire Jess Mendoza as the special project first name, starting July 1st, step 17, eight. That's 18,900 for hire, which is the effect of July 1st.
Okay. You've heard the, can you put that in the form of a motion? All right. You've heard the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Welcome aboard, Jess.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next item is my items. I have an EMS report from the Petersburg EMS for the month of May. They had five dispatches within the city, three transports, two non-transporters, five billable runs. They had one dispatch outside the city limits, one non-transport, one billable run. It's for a total of six billable runs for May. Their May financials, they have a total revenue of $3,179.92. Total expenses for May of $7,614,090, or a difference of minus $4,434.17. So could I get someone to make a motion to approve this Petersburg EMS report?
I'll send them over to George.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The next item is to discuss having Reed's Glass put panic bars on the first floor doors. We're having to keep the doors open for the fire marshal notification, so. And even though we put the signs out, we put barrier tape out, we're still having people that are coming and going through those doors. Rather than coming through the basement and through the security stations, so. Jimmy, were you able to contact Reed's this week? You know, we had a proposal that they gave.
Well, that's, the bid I had was still to go.
Okay. All right. So if the court, we won't take any action on it, but if you would allow me to re-contact Reed's because the proposal they gave us has expired. But I feel like it's something we need to go ahead and do. Like I said, it's, they still breach the doors. Like I said, we try to put the sand, well, we have put the sand up. Try to keep it taped and placed. But we still have people that come in from the building. So just need to, I will contact Reed's, talk to him about, hope to get a call. See if they'll respond or something. That's just for information. The next item I have, I received a request from the South Plains Workforce, asking that we would reappoint Willis McCutcheon to another two-year term on the board of directors of that organization. So do I hear a motion to appoint Willis McCutcheon to another two-year term on the board of directors of the workforce solution? I'll make that motion. Motion made by Commissioner Nell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. And then the next item I have is a resolution. I've got a document for each of you. Okay. Here's Chris's copy. Okay. The city of Plankton is applying for what they call a raised grant application. This is the letter from the GOP. Close, please find the raised grant with the city of Plankton for a proposed extension of Mesa Drive between Walmart and Westgate. It is my understanding the city has requested the county partner in the grant application so that you will garner more points in the awards process, but they intend to cover all the costs of the project. This resolution merely expresses the intent applied conjunction with him. It says that the county will enter whatever necessary contractual agreements with the city in the grant. And so I'll read the resolution. The resolution of the County Commissioners' Court for Hill County, Texas, supporting and authorizing the filing of a grant application in conjunction and cooperation with the city of Plankton for funds with the rebuilding of American infrastructure with sustainability and equity discretion grant program for the Mesa Drive Extension Project, designating an authorized official and authorized such official to execute all the items necessary in pledging compliance to the awarded grant program. Whereas a home to $1 billion was made available for obligation through the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021 where the United States Department of Transportation Office and the Secretary of Transportation made grants on a competitive basis for capital investments, surface transportation infrastructure projects that will have a significant impact on the nation, the metropolitan area, or a region. And whereas the rebuilding of American infrastructure with sustainability and equity discretion grants program was made available under the December 27th, 2020 federal register. And whereas projects eligible for funding in this program include highway, bridge, and public transportation projects. And whereas transportation agencies, cities, and counties can submit projects directly to the Department of Transportation. And whereas the Mesa Drive Extension Project is eligible for the funding of the raise program and is included in the City of Plankton's comprehensive plan and capital improvement plan. Whereas Hill County finds it is in the best interest of the citizens of Hill County that the county plays with the city of Plankton, or raise funds will be used to raise capital investment in the surface transportation infrastructure for the Mesa Drive Extension Project. And whereas Hill County agrees that funding in the event of loss or issues of raise funds, Hill County assures that the funds will be returned to the Department of Transportation. Whereas the Hill County designated Hill County Judge David Law as the grantee's authorized official. The authorized official is given the power to apply for, reject, alter, terminate the grant on behalf of the county co-op agency. Now therefore, we have resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Hill County that the Hill County Commissioners' Court of Hill County hereby operates and supports the county's submission of the application in cooperation in conjunction with the city of Plankton to the office of Secretary of Transportation for funds under the rebuilding of American infrastructure with sustainability and equity raise discretionary grant program for the Mesa Drive Extension. This resolution's public purpose is to submit the grant application in conjunction and cooperation with the city of Plankton to the office of Secretary of Transportation for the Department of Transportation for the Mesa Drive Extension Project. The Commissioners' Court hereby designate County Judge David Law as the grantee's authorized official to act on behalf of the county. Judge Law is authorized to execute on behalf of the county all necessary documents to apply for, except, reject, alter, terminate the grant on behalf of the county applicant agency for the capital investment in the Mesa Drive in Hill County. The county commissioners, in the event of the approval of the grant application for the Mesa Drive Extension Project, take necessary steps to negotiate all appropriate contractual agreements with the city of Plankton for the acceptance use and expenditure of the grant funds in regard to the financial responsibility of parties in the project. So what the city, they're applying through sparring for this grant to extend that go on Mesa Drive. Well, Mesa Drive behind Walmart.
I saw a second.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll connect the Westgate, the Westgate company. Yeah. So.
Just not maximum.
No. In fact, this is all the expenditures of the grant, everything from the city. They just, they explained to me that in the process of being awarded the grant to help serve cause in the city, county, or co-op applicant. So after hearing what Jim wrote in the resolution, do I hear a motion that we would approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. And would you amend to your motion to allow me to sign the necessary documents? So have the motion and the second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that includes my line items, so next will be Commissioner Green.
We recently had an auction on Southern County's circus equipment. One of those items was a chip spreader. We have it, did not sell. Since that auction, I've had an individual reach out to me with some interest in buying this chip spreader. And he made an offer, which was pretty close to our own, which was $35,000. His name is Mark Pansy. He's a cowboy. After some discussion, I, I think it would be in our best interest to go ahead and sell this chip spreader, maintenance cost on it's been, been pretty big. Whenever we have used it, we have used it much. We've had a lot of issues. Having said that, I'd like to form a motion to go ahead and sell this chip spreader in his hands for $35,000. Auditors, I would say, building information. Once we receive payment, it'd be, you know.
Okay. Have a motion to sell this chip spreader, Mark Pansy, at the cost of $35,000. Do you hear a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And then last but not least, Carmen, what do you think?
Hi.
How are you? So it's been a year.
It's been a year already. The time flies, doesn't it?
Oh, maybe you're putting this out to her right now.
Am I helping? I'll be glad to charge. I know we do need the one-day one, but this is for our FY Resource Magazine that we publish once a year. It will publish in July, but of course, we have to work on it that in advance. And you guys usually do a full page in this, and it's not. And you guys usually do a full page in this, and it's, nothing has changed on it as far as circulation, production, and more costs. So, we're keeping that exact same at fourteen hundred dollars. And I attached a sample of your ad, and I'm glad to take any questions if you want me to. I know we need the one of Chris.
Two.
Two?
We need Chris Daniels and then Tom.
Okay, okay, gotcha. We can do that, and anybody else who wants to do pictures, we'll be going to take that. I know we haven't taken quite well for most.
Me and Rob will make one contract with, uh, Glashaw.
There you go.
All right, uh, so you've heard the request for Carmen for the full base ad. And a cost of fifteen hundred dollars, uh, to be published in July, uh, twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
I will.
Motion made by Commissioner King, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pinnell, any discussion? We will notify Chris and Tom to contact.
Okay, and remember, this goes online for the whole year, so, I'll take you pictures that go on with you.
All right, I appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And that will conclude our agenda this morning, so we'll stand at period ten oh one, amen. Thank y'all, have a good weekend.